Good evening. Good. We are recorded. Okay, welcome everyone. I'm gonna do my normal switching to glasses about six times. So I'll be able to see something. Um. Would anyone like privilege of the floor? It's have to be you. No. Okay, so anyone who's on Zoom would like to speak, please just raise your hand so I can see you. Hi Ernie. Good. Um, I don't see anyone wanting to speak, so I I'm gonna move on to approval of the minutes of the May 24th and the June 7th meeting. I know Bill has suggested change to the June 7th meeting, so let's just do May 24th first. Would someone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Thank you. And a second?
Bill has a second.
I can second.
Thank you, Bill. Any changes? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. The 6/7 meeting, I sent them around and Bill wrote up a suggestion about replacing, I think what they put in for the town council report. Yep.
I've got two changes. One is a modification of town council report and one is a modification, you know, just a quick thing somewhere else. So and so, yeah, so the motivation here is that the town council report in the minutes talked about the town law that would enable them to continue meeting virtually. Because it wasn't clear that the state law was gonna, you know, the exact order be extended. And that's, that's actually not correct. So I was just trying to clarify what the town board actually is, is doing or had and have now has done. And I think I'm gonna, I will share my screen. That might make this easiest and I'll just read for those who are in the audience at the town hall. The proposal. So let me try to. There we go. Apologies, I have to look at the bottom of my glasses. Okay, so I don't know who there can read that particularly if you're in the town halls. I know you're just the one screen there. But what the minutes had noted that Tim Murray know the town council would have a public hearing on June 8th about a new town law. And then went on to say to allow meetings to be held virtually. And that this is needed because the state has not yet extended the virtual meeting law. And we still have a high COVID transmittal rate. And I am suggesting that we strike starting at meetings to be held virtually through the end of COVID trends middle rate. Instead, say that they have a hearing about a new law, town law to allow participation by town officials who, for limited reasons spelled out in the town law, need to attend a meeting virtually. This law takes advantage of changes recently made at the state level that update state law to reflect the capabilities of modern technology. And that's really what's going on. This, the state has realized that stuff's a little antiquated that with things like Zoom that seeing your representative on a big screen is pretty much as good as having them there in person. And it's not just COVID. There, you know, and again, the law says if the person's out of town temporarily or something else, they can participate virtually. It does require, as we mentioned last time, that, that a majority, this is the state law level. So ours also says that basically a quorum needs to be present physically. So that was, I just, so that's my proposal and there it is. So I move that.
Thank you, Bill. That's well said.
Do we have a second?
Where did he come up with the wording, "This law takes advantage of changes recently made at state level and update state law to reflect the capabilities of modern technology."
That is based on both my reading of the law and what comments that Mark and Tim made at the last meeting and a subsequent conversation I had with Mark. That's where that came from.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, do I have any further questions or comments? All in favor of this amendment to the minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Um. Then we'll go on. That's
And I have one last little one, one second one. In the third bullet point in the discussion, you mentioned that we went through the specific guidelines and requirements section. We recalled that. And then the last sentence reads, "We went through all the lettered and numbered sections under 4.2 and decided what were guidelines and requirements." And I'm just suggesting saying that we decided, you know, essentially which were guidelines and which were requirements, which I think is
Much better.
So I move that.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ernie, Bill and Ernie. Any questions or comments? Um, all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go on to the entire minutes now with those two amendments. Bill, I saw you very much wanting to move that.
Oh, yes, I moved the minutes. Sure.
Thank you. And, uh, and Ernie is jumping up and down here to second. Yeah. So.
All over that.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those who are adopted. Thank you. That made it all much clearer. Thanks. Um, I think now we get to go on to town council report with Tim Murray.
Um, not that much to report. Um, Mark distributed signs for the public information sessions. So there's one, I know there's one in front of the town hall. There's one at the corner of 79 and J. Field. Mark, where else are they?
Bill, Bill put out the other ones, I think.
Thank you, Bill.
Well, so, okay, so, yeah, so, so there's, as you said, there's one at the town hall. I also put one up at the Brookendale Fire Hall. The venue. And then there's one in front of Brooklyn's Market. And, uh, Mark, did you put one in Speedsville?
There's one at the Speedsville Square. Yep.
Okay. And then Ernie was gonna do another one. Ernie, has that one gone up?
Yep, yep, yep. Although could use some wheat whacking, I noticed as I put my bike over the other day.
And where did you put it?
In, in, in front of the church on, uh, on, uh, Buffalo.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Seventy, all 76 in Buffalo, you know.
Okay, great.
Town of Carolina. What's the denomination of that church? I don't remember.
It, well, it's, you're by Caroline Center. Yeah. Okay. Um, thank you. And by the way, did the town, did the proposed law pass?
Yes, in policy.
Okay, great. Um, thank you.
So last, it's the last town business meeting.
Oh, you're muted, Tim.
Yeah, Tim, I think you hit your space, but there we are.
Okay, sorry. Um, so we, so we held a, um, public hearing on the town law. And then, um, passed the law as well. And in the meantime, I'll just mention that the governor extended the, um, emergency declaration regarding open meetings law. I believe it's through July 15th.
Thank you. Okay. Um, by the way, is there any changes that need to get made to the agenda? I never asked her at the beginning. Okay. Um, so we are going to have a public information meetings on June 28th and June 30th. And Nan has kindly put together a PowerPoint. And we're gonna ask Nan to share that and just talk through this so that we are ready for next Tuesday and Thursday.
Um, Jean, before you do that, in the email you sent out, uh, you said, "But please think about a section that you feel really comfortable with." And I know, cause you and I talked, that, that part of the intent there is that we, the zoning commission might present sections of the whole, whole PowerPoint. I just wanna make sure that that is indeed the intent there and that everyone gets that idea.
Yes.
And then we should discuss why we are gonna do that at some point.
That's, I, I hope that we can present this and we can use Nan for backup for questions when we are feeling like that question is so technical that we're not quite understanding. Cause I want, I, I want us to exhibit our understanding of what we have written. So Nan.
So the idea is be, as we go through, I guess folks should think about, hey, is that, you know, all these five or 10 slides, something I think I could present. I think that's
Exactly so.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not sure I actually feel comfortable doing that, but
Not everyone has to. It's like a you get, but you get extra points.
Yeah.
In your, in your permanent record, you know?
All right.
Your permanent record.
All right. All right.
You can have my points.
Okay. Um, so Nan is sharing her screen. And here it is.
So, um, I think you have all seen this. This was, um, kept the same format of the one that we did in December. I forget when that was that we, I guess that was in December.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so, um, there's 20 slides. And, um, the first one is just the cover. Um, you know, an introductory kind of stuff. Those I think are, you know, just an introduction for everybody. Um, I, I thought that maybe it would be good to start with just reiterating the charge for the zoning commission. Um, just to kind of set the stage of what the zoning commission is supposed to be doing. Um, so this is the same bullet points that we, um, we had in the previous, uh, slides, set of slides. Um, so I don't know if you want, I, I don't know how much detail, Jean, you want me to go into these or just wait and see if someone has any edits as we go along or what.
Yeah, let's just, I, I think people can read them and if there are edits, we'll, we'll stop and go back. Or if there's something that people need, things need to
Turn your volume down just a little bit.
Oh, uh, let's see.
I don't know which one it is. It might not be you. It might be here.
Um. Trying to see how I can do that here.
We've done it.
She sounds, she sounds fine here.
Okay.
So, okay.
All right. So, um, and then again, kind of part of the introduction is just, um, talking about the planning process of how this, you know, when this started and what the steps have been from adoption of the comprehensive plan through where we are um, now. So this is just a summary of, um, the broad stages that we've gone through over the last year or so. Again, just to give folks a, a refresher on where we've come. Um, and so then, then we're going to move in to talk about the first four articles that are out for review at these sessions. And, um, so those four session, sections are the purpose statements, the definitions, description of the districts, and then the uses in dimensions. And I think that, um, while it's not necessarily a bullet point in any of these slides, that I recall that at the last meeting, you all had wanted to emphasize that the comments, um, were, you know, were really focused on these four first articles and not the whole thing. I mean, it might be hard for someone to not say some, if they have something they wanna say, but you know, I think you wanted to emphasize that we're really there to hear what people have to say about these first four ones that you guys have spent so much time going over. So, um, so this is just kind of an introductory of what we're, what are in the four articles. Um, and this may be a little out of place now that I refreshed. Now I haven't looked at it in, in a little bit of time, but anyway, I, I added, I kept in, um, some other introductory materials that I think are important to keep reiterating with folks is those the tie between zoning and the comprehensive plan. And that the zoning is a tool to try and address the goals and recommendations that are in the comprehensive plan. Um, and to talk about the legal tie between zoning and the comprehensive plan. So, uh, in this, you know, all kind of all goes back to the purpose statements that are in Article 1. So, um, this was just, uh, you know, starting off with where we have, we have before where we always go back and, and wonder, you know, what the comprehensive plan policy and direction, uh, has been established for whatever it is we're trying to accomplish. Um, another little refresher on what those policies were and again, about what the conference plan was all about. This is the same slide. I believe we might've made a couple little edits to this, but this is the same slide that we had before on the major points that are included in the comprehensive plan. Um, so that kind of is all an introductory. Oh, seven slides. Um. So any, did I hear someone have?
I, I would suggest moving the last two slides to before the blue one that says, um, Articles 1 through 4.
Yeah. Okay. So then all of the intro, yeah, I agree with that. All of the introductory stuff is, um, the charge, the planning process, the tie to the comprehensive plan and a little bit about the major emphasis of the comprehensive plan all comes together. And then we're gonna move into talking about Articles 1 to 4. This is just an introductory slide. And then, um, this one, I, you know, the, the ones that follow, I wanna make sure it captures the, the kind of things that you want to highlight. Um. And, um, so this is, you know, to talk about the purpose statements. Um, and I just see a typo here, Article, this is should be um, I don't know if I can make changes here. I'll go back and fix that. That should be Article 1 includes. Um. Uh, and then, um, we just move, look a little forward. So this, the next slides really are very broad to kind of highlight the, the things that you guys have spent a lot of time talking about. Um, promoting small businesses and home occupations. Um, protecting farming, farmland and open spaces. Uh, protect the environment, especially water. And this is, you know, looking at, um, wetlands, uh, watersheds and, um, aquifers. So, you know, I didn't put a lot of bullet points. This is very general. So if you guys are gonna split this up and someone is gonna, you know, talk from these slides, there's certainly a lot more that you can say about the purpose statements. And I don't wanna give them short shrift because they're very important. The purpose statements are, are super important and not to be a forgotten part of because that they outline why you're doing all of this. Um, so these can, you know, we can add to these. I only pulled out a couple of the, you know, the major purpose statements. There, there are others. Um, but I thought these were ones that you, um, that a lot of the things that the zoning commission has been talking about and that the zoning addresses get at those, um, those three. Um, even though there's more.
Yep.
Let me just make a note to fix that slide. That is slide 8. Um. So then
It just, I'm, I'm just pondering this. Um, back on that one that you were gonna make a change to, um, a proposed Article 1, the purpose statements. I don't think those are, I, I don't think the purpose statements for each district are in Article 1.
Yeah, you know, and I, now, I think you're right. I think I added that box in is, is to that Article 1 is the broad purpose statements. And so actually this box is correct, is that Article 3 includes the purpose statements for each district. So you're right, that, that actually, this box is right. And you know, I think I just added it into as a reminder to let folks know that we have overall purpose statements, but we've also stated the purpose for each of the zoning districts.
Okay, thank you.
So that actually doesn't need to be fixed, but you, you know, you may ultimately decide that it seems a little out of place and you don't want to have it there.
Things are Or, and whoever is describing this slide either needs to remember, I think, and mention there's purpose statements for the entire document. That's, that's Article 1. And then note, by the way, you know, Article 3 has purposes for the individual hamlets or districts. Or we should somehow say purpose statements for entire zoning plan here. I, I don't know the right way to do it, but just to help remind anybody have an idea. Or you just remember to say that.
He can know it and see whoever is gonna do which parts.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so then a little bit about the purpose statements and then moving into, um, Article 2. Um, and this is just examples. I just randomly pulled out um, a section of the zoning. Just really, it's not to have people read this, um, but to illustrate and have something up on the screen while we're talking about that you went through um, every definition. You got rid of some, you added some, you edited a lot to fine tune them specifically to meet the, you know, to match the goals and the needs of the town. Um, and that we moved this from the back of the document to the, the second article so that for flow and so that it's easier for everybody to, um, quickly find the words. And I, I think the another key point of talking about the definitions is, and if you'll, you know, everyone is concerned about the length of the document. Um, everyone, everywhere is concerned about the length of these documents. And the, the definitions are many, many pages. Um, but that's done deliberately because having everything defined so that there's common understanding among landowners, applicants, the planning board and everyone else who's involved is really critical, especially when you want a quick and easy process where you have vague definitions or no definitions and people don't know what you're talking about. Sends things to the zoning borders of appeal for interpretation. It adds delays. Um, because people are trying to figure out, well, what does that word mean? So having a really comprehensive set of definitions as we have in here that you guys have spent a lot of time thinking about and going over is really critical. So that's what, those are the highlights of what I would say at this slide. If you don't like these three, or if you want something else here, um, as an example, we can certainly change them or take it out. Um, you know, uh, it's up to you. I just wanted to, you know, have a talking point. Um, so there, that's really the only slide we have for Article 2. Um. And Article 3 is, um, the, the article that breaks down and talks about the different districts. Um, so we have our egg rural district and, um, the different hamlets. We have the large commercial district in the, uh, overlay, the water resource, uh, flooding overlay district. So this again, um, so I have the map that comes next that has
Back up real quick, one second. Sorry. Is Beesmer the same font size as the others?
Uh.
It looks small. And
No, you're right. It is small. There.
Okay, that looks more fair.
Yeah, yes. Um. So, um, you know, it, it was hard in a slideshow to, we could get like super detailed about all of these i- in the slideshow and go through each one. Um, but, so this is where I think your discussion tonight ought to be. How, how much do you wanna show? How much you wanna get into? I mean, there's nothing that's gonna substitute for people reading what's on the pages. But, um, you know, there's a lot of things that could be said here. You could simply say, these are the districts. You could go through each one and talk a little bit about what we're trying to do in each one. Um, we, you can talk about the changes. Um, I do have, um, a, a slide that has the current, uh, map and you could talk about that. Uh, you know, we split up the, the hamlet in here. We changed the configuration of Beesmer. Um, we, we reconfigured the criteria that went into the, um, overlay district. I have a map for, um, that one that we did that shows where those changes were. Um, we removed the forest core overlay. So again, I, I, I wasn't sure your, your kind of instructions when we started this was you didn't want the meeting to be all presentation. So this is kind of at a high level. And we can add detail or someone, whoever's gonna do this can talk more detail or whatever you would like. So, um,
Let me say that I've had two questions in the last week, which I need to get back to people about. And they've both been essentially about mapping. Um, someone who feels that where his house is on Valley Road should not be in the district, the, the Brookendale District. And, um, and I think that one of the things that has to be said here is that we want people to look very carefully at the maps. Um, and think about their own, their own property. Would there make it, would it make a difference to them whether they were in a hamlet or not? And, uh, if so, why? And let us know. And that would be very important for us. And then I think the, the other one is somebody who feels that, um, the water resources map. Um, he's concerned that when he bought his property, no one had ever told him that there was any, um, any water resources on it essentially. And now it's, you know, and I need, I know I need to get back to him and say that one of the things that has happened is there are new flooding maps out. I don't actually know where he lives. He hasn't told me. But that, um, our consultant had the opportunity to look at the new maps from the, from the county that the county has received, but have really not been published yet. And they're, we're trying to put this in here so people would have an idea of those. And, um, we can't actually determine what's what's a wetland and what's not a wetland. That's not for the zoning board to do. It's really for, it's for state officials essentially to do. So I, I, I think that that's the kind of thing that has to be talked about and we get to the maps. Does that make sense to people? And if we get other, I mean, I, I think the maps are very critical to people. I think that they want to really see what, what, where their own property is and what it would, how it would affect them.
Yeah. And I think that the only way to really do that, of course, is to have a large map or a, I want to talk about maybe they can zoom in on. And that's my one comment on these two maps is you, you really can't see anything. And so what I would wonder about is whether we should have a couple of blow up maps, one of maybe the, obviously the, the northeast quadrant or the top half, top third of the town. Maybe, cause that would show those districts and then you could zoom in on Speedsville and Caroline Center. I don't know. So it, but you can't see anything on this. That's point one. And point two on the water resources overlay. I mean, I, the flood, I wouldn't, I don't know. Yes, that gets complicated. And we had this question that Michelle relayed from Will about the water resources overlay. And I think we do need to lay out clearly what the criteria were that were used. And I'm happy to write a note to everybody about that since I looked at it or Nan can do that. But I think that, um, remember that a lot of it is wetlands. And wetlands are regulated whether or not they're in the water resources overlay. With no overlay, the same protection exists for those wetlands. There's nothing new there. What is new is the extent of the riparian buffer. And you got, saw the note I had from D C about that, that if there's no defined top of bank, D E C does regulate up to 50 feet from most streams. Um, but this is different. This is a, so the riparian buffer is different. The flood zone's a flood zone. But what is different there is that the existing town law allows building in flood zones. And that is different than the zoning code. So there are certain things that are importantly different, but all I would say is it's not all flooding. Uh, a lot of it's wetlands. Um, so it's a little more nuanced, I think, than the what you discussed out. That's like, oh.
Yeah, I think that's true. And so I think that that is, whoever does this section really should talk about that.
When, when is the new map from the county gonna be available?
Probably not till the fall.
Wow. Because that would make a difference to some people because if it's in that water overlay doesn't really make much difference.
Right, exactly. So if, if that's the issue, or as Bill said, it could just be a wetland. And you don't, I don't actually know. And I'm never gonna know for every spot on the map. No, nobody particularly it's, I think, until somebody goes and looks at that specific spot. So, um,
One of the things I would just react, um, in terms of a map, yes, I think you should have some printed maps that people can look at. But I also think that we could have also on hand, uh, this map um, ready to go outside of the PowerPoint, cause it's very hard in the body, you know, when you have the slides up to take it in zoom and but if we had, after we're done with the But if we had, after we're done with the presentation, we can put the map up. So that i- i- that we can zoom in and out of wherever we need to look at um. Outside of the PowerPoint. So we certainly have those maps that are digital that we can scale up on the presentation. Close, you know, a close range. It's very hard to do that, you know, or I should say harder to do that. In the PowerPoint and, you know, when you're doing a presentation.
I think that's a really good idea and um, particularly important for the Zoom. Because at the Brookton Dale Fire Department, we can have large scale maps there and then we'll have several around here. Okay.
Michelle's your hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see anybody. So you have to shout out. Michelle.
Um, I guess I would just reiterate that I, I, I think people are really concerned and interested in. How this like, uh, what if, where did you get the information to make up this map?
Okay.
I think people want to know that specifically.
Should we have a slide then that lays out the parameters? Do people think that would be a good idea?
I think that would be a great idea. Um.
You mean, you're talking about the Water Resources one, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add a slide in that talks, there's, I don't know, five or six bullet points of data that we included in here. So we certainly do that. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Great idea. Okay. Uh. So I guess going back to this one. Um, is this enough? Do you need more detail or what?
I think that's enough. I think the points that whoever's talking, it should make is that um, these were. Historical districts, historical hamlets. That um, that, that there's uh. Hamlets are often defined as a place that has a public meeting place and there were, you know, a church, uh. A school, a something, uh, a store. And uh, that they are intrinsically different than the ag rural district in that housing is closer to each other. That um, people generally are on smaller lots. Should have just described why, you know, why we chose those places and that, that we had long discussions about the borders. And where we put the borders and we are very open to hearing from people about. Where the borders are. Um.
That's recorded, right?
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, I think you got the job.
Okay, great. And then I think the Water Resources and flooding overlay is um, is really a whole separate issue that we have to go into great detail on.
Um, comment on, on this slide, um, water and resource at the very bottom should just be water resource. Um, and large commercial district. Um, that's, it doesn't, I mean, it seems like we're saying we made a commercial district that's very large.
You should say small commercial district.
I think it is.
Small. No, I mean, maybe that is the name we gave it in the draft and I, I, and we even had discussion. I agree. I don't know how, what they call it. We, but we called it commercial district. That was even more confusing, right? People thought it was the only place they could have commercial stuff.
Right.
Commercial district for.
Yeah. Well, whoever just does this ad, well, does this slide will have to explain that.
Large scale.
No, but I, I think, I think having large commercial district up there as words is not a good idea. So perhaps primarily commercial district.
Could I suggest concentrated commercial district?
Concentrated.
But I don't think you need the word district there, right? I mean, you've already got districts as the heading.
Well.
So you don't have.
We have.
No, I, it should be there because it's ag district, hamlet districts.
Okay.
Commercial district. You know, I mean, it's. Do we have the same level?
Yeah, I, I wondered about the, you know, the large because it, it does convey that you're, that it's a district for large things. Um, and so, yeah, I think that. I mean, I personally don't have a problem with just commercial district, but um. Yeah, I mean, but if we change it here and you want to change the word large, you know, in the text, we just have to make a note that that needs to be changed as we move along.
Okay, do people like the word concentrated?
You could have a lot of places to change.
No, I don't think that works either.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I'd leave it as commercial district.
Um, but that, that makes it sound like that's the only place that we're allowing commercial activities and, and everybody gets upset about that because it's not true.
Yeah, we, we got a lot of flack last time when that's what it was called. So I, I don't, yeah, I don't have a brilliant answer either. We came up with large last time.
Or, or scale.
About additional. Additional commercial district or dedicated commercial district.
I like large scale because aren't we, aren't the uh, we're allowing a literally larger scale commercial operations in that one area, right?
Large, large scale does it for me rather than just large commercial district.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I admit it. It's unclear if large is referring to the commercial size or to the district size and certainly is, is unclear. I get that. So.
Yeah.
Large scale is probably okay.
But then, uh, you know, to play devil's advocate, you are allowing small things in there too.
Exactly.
Right.
That's why I say kind of okay.
Yeah. Primarily commercial.
That's possible.
Um. I love primarily.
Focused commercial.
Focus, yeah.
Focus.
No, I, I, I like primarily or focus. That sounds good. Either one.
I like focus.
Focus is, I'm not sure everybody would get that, but.
Focus large commercial.
Let's just say focused and that because it, I think that does describe it.
It's vague enough that, that you can, you know, that you segue into explaining what that means.
Right.
Well, and I agree. And so I see that whoever is describing the slide needs to say, you know, in other words, this is an area in which it is a, you know, there's going to be a focus on commercial activities. But of course, there are some residences there too, you know, that sort of thing.
Right. Okay. Okay. I like, we are making progress. This is good.
Okay, so I will add in here um, another slide that has the Water Resource Criteria. Um, and then um, then we move into the proposed article four. That um, again, we don't have. Heaps of detailed bullet points here. Um, you know, that this article have includes the uses and the dimensions and that we should describe what those, why we have a use table. Um, you know, that the use table tells you what's allowed and what the review process is that goes along with each one of those uses. We might want to talk briefly about the difference between a permitted use. A, a use that requires abbreviated site plan or site plan or special use, just so people are going to be looking at that table and would want to know what those. Acronyms mean. Um. You know, and then this is, you, you spend, again, you all spend a lot of time. I'm not sure I got the right list here of things, but you did add. More businesses. You went line by line. You know, you can talk about the, the emphasis that you have on wanting to be small business friendly and home occupations. Um. That you fine tune these by district, which is reflected in the use table. And so then I have um, just a, again, not really to read because it's too small. I probably could make it a little bigger on this slide, but just to show. Um, you know, how the table is laid out and how maybe talk a little bit about how you read it and, you know, what each of one of these little. Boxes say with the Ps and the ASPRs um, and so forth. Um, so, yeah.
Pause. So, so I, I agree. I think that's fine. Again, we're not going to go through the table line by line. This is fine. And I think someone could explain, yeah, across the top here, these are the districts and then here will be the, you know, the, the things along here that. I agree that we probably. I think one point that needs to be made is for folks to understand that because someone requires review. That does not mean the review board can say, no, you can't do that. That the whole point of the use table is that if it's in there and allowed, it's allowed. Because as Ernie was mentioning, the. Uh, Facebook page that he enjoyed reading. It was clear that, that a person was, was talking about how, you know, do you know that there's this. Group of five people who get to determine whether you get to do your thing or not, and that's not the case, as I understand it. Site plan. Review has its restrictions in terms of it cannot tell you no, right? And even a, a special use permit. Can modify the use a little bit. So I think that what we need to make sure we get across is. You know, things, if it has an X, it's not allowed except as a home occupation. Everything else is allowed somewhere. And I agree with you now that we need to explain a little bit about what SPR and ASPR mean and SUP. And on top of that, and this is where I think we could really use some help from you, is a few examples of what might happen, like under special use permit, I can imagine, I'm sorry, under. Uh, site plan review, I can imagine, for example, that. You know, as if you were, want, want to make sure there's enough parking for the business. Because if there's not, then there's going to be tens of people to park on the neighbor's lawn, right? So you don't, there's a reason for why it has review. So if we had a few, two or three, one, two examples of the kind of thing that might be reviewed. That might help get the point across that it really is allowed. And these are the kinds of things that the review board will look at, not yes or no, but. Do we need to, for a special use permit, say you can't emit this light or this odor at these, you know, hours or, yeah, I don't know. I need some good examples of, of what it is they might say. Because people are thinking, oh, my God, they're going to have like ironclad control over everything. And I just, I think we need to make it clear that that's not what's going on.
Right. I mean, and then the whole object of, of this is to. Outline and deep, well, detail what your. Performance expectations are, what your standards and guidelines are. With the understanding that whether it's site plan review or special use permit, that if someone comes forward and meets those criteria. They get a yes at the end and they get an efficient yes at the end. That's the point uh, that we're trying to make. That this is. These review processes are. In, in my opinion, I know some communities don't feel this way, um, but it, uh, these are all permitted uses. A, a use that requires a special use permit is a permitted use. It's just something that has certain characteristics that you need to be more careful about. And so there's certainly a presumption in, in underline all of these things that. The zoning will outline the expectations and if you meet the expectations, you will get a yes. That's, that's how we should be portraying it because that's how it should be run. Um, so, but I would certainly be ready to offer some examples.
Right, that's, that's right. Not on the slide, but yeah, if you could provide us with some things you have in our back pocket.
Okay.
To use as examples.
Agreed.
Okay. Um, so then the other part of this article is the dimensions table.
I had, I had one more point. I'm so sorry. Uh, so I don't know where this happens. I think it would be good somewhere and this is probably about the right time that. We make clear what a home business is because it's sort of, I just. And, and I don't know, and again, to me, the wording is basically, you know, a home based occupation is just something that is taking place. In a residence that is, you know, clearly secondary to the use of the properties as a residence, but other than that, that's pretty much it. I know we have details in the law, but. Um. I don't know, or, or maybe we don't have to, but it just seems to me that, that, that saying you can do as a home occupation, people might be wondering what that, what that means. I don't, other people in the zoning commission think that needs further defining for the public or at this stage?
I think that, I think that's a good sentence and if people have questions, they can ask more about that. But I, you know, for instance. I operate a consulting business from my home. Uh, my husband is an artist and operates his, his art studio from our home. Um. Ernie, do you work from your home?
No.
Here, Ernie is an architect and he works from his home.
So do you want a slide, I mean, a, a separate slide on home occupations as, you know, with a couple of talking points?
I don't know that we need to do that. I think that, you know, if there's a general consensus that people know what a home occupation is, even if it's. Not exactly in, in lockstep with everybody else's concept. If, if people have questions about a specific. Activity that they're doing and whether it would be regulated as home occupation, then we'll entertain those questions, but.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need to dwell on it.
I, I think, I think one sentence somewhere up there, the word home occupation or home business appeared or.
Yes, it was uh, right here.
Yeah, all home businesses are allowed and that would be a point where someone would just say, and by the way, what we mean by home occupation. You know, is, is any business operating out of a residence that is secondary to the use of the property as, as a residence. Something like that. And just whoever's saying that just says that fair.
And, and we have uh, employees, the equivalent full, two, full to three ti- full time employees. Is that another point that should be made with that?
Yeah, that gets the distinction major and minor and I was steering clear of that detail at this point. If there's a question, but.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Yeah, let's not get into that.
Okay.
Do you think that you need, um, when we're talking about this table, either. Maybe down in here or a separate slide, do you want to have um. You know, P equals permitted, ASPR equals abbreviated site plan review, just as like talking points, so we know what those are, or does that just clog it up?
Yeah.
I think that would be very useful. Put in that slide.
But, but make the table as large as possible. Use up all that white space for the table.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and on that slide you're talking about, you know, again, it's sort of like, you know, when you, you know, when you, the public look at this table, you're going to see a lot of symbols like these and here's what they mean, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I got, I definitely, I can crop this and then make it bigger.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so, um. The uh. I just see this here. Um. So these were some of the changes that you made in the use, in the area in the mentions table, you know, allowing for smaller lot sizes, increasing building height. We removed the setback requirements. We increased the commercial building sizes. Um, if those aren't the. Strong points you want to emphasize, we, we can make changes or add another slide if we need to.
I think those are good.
Yeah, I thought they were fine.
Um, then the next one is also still on article four where. Um, we're talking about, we kind of introduced that we have, remind folks that we have the reader's aid boxes to help people um. With uh, understand, further understanding of some of the concepts. Uh, and this is where we get into the, the net acreage and the calculating density, monitoring lot splits, you know, certainly these two here are related. Um, and, you know, looking at Bill's um, uh. Meter's aid graphic that he did and going through this. And I, I don't know if you wanted to. You know, walk through all of the steps of how that's done or just kind of introduce that this is what's in the chapter. Um, and, uh, and then the, uh, the last part of article four is um, the density bonuses. With the specific note that the zoning commission is still interested in hearing from the public about the. The level of density bonus that um, that's in there. Is that too low, too high, or how people feel about that? Um. So I think those are important, at least to. You know, introduce the concepts or reintroduce the concepts so people know. Vaguely what they are at least and know on what's in article four.
Well, I think the most important thing is, is just the concept of net acreage. How many lots can you get out of your parcel? Um, that can be made clear, then these other refinements can be discussed, but I think that's going to be the. The, the salient point that people are going to, you know, react to. Um, three acres, really? You know, whatever.
Okay, um, so then there's just one, one last slide, which are the next steps. Um, so it's got a little wordy, but um, you know, I think this um. Outlines what those major steps are, so we can go through those steps so people know where it goes from here.
Yep.
So, um. Yeah, so uh.
Uh, you're, you're missing another public hearing down there under um, town, every town board gets it. Am I missing it out there?
Um.
Yes, after the town board reviews, they have to have a public hearing.
That's right.
Okay, um, also, um.
Seeker, right.
Well, I mean, there's seeker two thirty-nine review, all that sort of stuff, but the, the public hearing is key. There's two public hearings. That's what I think we're going to ensure the public is aware of.
Yeah, right.
Okay. So who would like to volunteer to do any part of this presentation on either the Zoom or in the in-person meeting? Um, anyone want to throw their hat in the ring?
Uh, I, I, I definitely don't, but I, I have a question about some logistics.
Okay.
I, um, so you, you know, like I can, I, I was hoping to attend the Zoom meeting, but I won't be able to attend the in-person meeting. And so do you have account for how many people are going to, in other words, are the same people going to do the present? And so do you have account for how many people are going to, in other words, are the same people going to do the presentations for both meetings?
I don't know. That's what I've been asked. Um, I'm going to be at both meetings and I want to see who's going to be at both meetings and, um, or at each meeting and who is willing to do part of a presentation at each. I'm also hoping that we might be able to, people who can't be at the in-person meeting, that maybe we could have the ability to have someone phone in using that kind of a phone device.
To the in-person meeting?
To the in-person meeting. I don't know if that's possible to have someone on the commission answer a question if they wanted to. I just don't know if it's possible for people to hear.
Yeah.
So that can be pretty dicey.
Yeah, tech can be very dicey. Yeah.
All right. So Jean?
Yep.
Um, so, so I will volunteer to do, you know, a segment of the presentation, but only at the virtual presentation. Um, I'm not yet to go, ready to go indoors with a, a large group of people. Um, however, I am happy and willing, uh, to sit outside the Brooklyn Fire Hall. If we can think of a way to, I'm not going to like participate in the meeting, but if either before meeting time, during the meeting, or potentially after the meeting, then it's getting dark, I would be happy to sit outside and have people ask me questions. If you guys are comfortable with me asking, or if one of other commission member wants to sit with me, we can have an additional venue outside the fire hall. So that's just food for thought. I don't know if it's going to work logistically, but you know, I'm happy to meet with people and talk to them. I'm just not happy to go inside the fire hall and do it. So if you can think of a way to use me outside, I'm willing to do that. And I will do, you know, all a part of a, a virtual presentation.
Thank you. And which one would you prefer? Give me a section that you would love to do.
Oh, I, why don't we, I will take whatever someone else doesn't want to do.
Okay. Uh, anybody else feeling like, uh, doing part of this as a presentation?
Yeah, this is, this is Barb. I, I am not available, uh, the night of the in-person meeting, uh, at all, not even to sit outside. Um, and, uh, for the virtual meeting, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, to do a section. Um, I don't know. You can just assign me something and I'll prepare for it. Or I mean, why, why don't I do the, why don't I do the stuff about the, the districts? How's that?
That's, um, three. Is that right?
Uh, let's see. So that is.
Or get some slide numbers.
Yeah. I mean, I don't remember. Yeah. All the.
Yeah. So the districts is slide 13. We might change a little bit if we're adding one about the over the water criteria. But so that's like 13, 14, 15, and then one extra slide for the cra- water criteria.
Okay. Um, great. Um, I think that would make sense. And I think Bill, I think you would do a great job on four.
Okay.
And, um, I can certainly do article one and two unless I hear somebody else saying.
The definitions there.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. And are you going to be there at both things or just one?
What's that?
You're going to be at both meetings or just one?
I'll be at both.
Okay. So Ernie, I'm going to give you, I'm going to do the intro, the beginning. And I will do that on both things. And we will have Ernie do that as well. And, um, we may just have to, Ernie, you and I may have to do three and four, or we could ask Nan to take part of that as well. Anybody have any thoughts?
Three and four is what? Remind me.
Three and four is districts and four is the whole flamazzle, you know, uses and definitions, which I think, Ernie, I think you know a lot about. Because of your.
Yeah, 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 yeah. 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 I got, no, it uses and dimensions. Yep.
So why don't we ask you to do uses and dimensions at the in-person meeting? And I will do the Barb part and we will hear them both do it. And then we'll just copy them.
I, I'm having a little trouble keeping up with who's doing what. So maybe we should write these down. So everybody knows.
I, I have sketched it down, but what I, I think, yeah, we need to get the edited thing and then we'll know like so and so this is very slight. But it sounds like at both sessions, Jean is going to essentially do the beginning part. She said articles one and two, but someone's got to do the overview, right? So Gina, you taking it on or?
Yes, I'm taking on the overview and article one, the introduction.
Over to article one. So, and then, um, Ernie at both meetings is going to take care of whatever is the definitions, which is a slide or two, I think.
Article two, yeah, article two.
And then, um, at the virtual thing, then we'll come Barb doing anything related to article three. And then we'll come me doing article four through the end. I think, you know, the last slide too, I'm happy to take on. But at the in-person meeting, those two sections are going to be taken up. Jean will do article three stuff and Ernie will do also article four stuff.
Exactly. Exactly. So, okay. And then we come to the part where people are going to ask questions. And I have been trying to find someone who will moderate and I have not been successful in finding that, um, person who will moderate one or the other. I've asked and have not gotten anybody to agree, but I'm going to continue to try. Uh, and if not, I think what I will have to do is take questions and see who will answer some, which can be anybody here and your name. And, um, we will do that by having people raise their hands. Uh, on the, on Zoom meeting, um, people can, um, raise their, they can raise their hand as soon as they get in. And I think one of the first things that we'll say is, if you want to ask a question this evening, raise your hand in the program and you will come up, you know, first, second, third, fourth, and it will be right down the side and we'll ask people that way. In the in-person meeting, we will ask people to, we'll have a list and people can sign up when they come in. If they think they want to ask a question or they can add their name to it. Does that sound reasonable? Good. And, um, the concept is we'll have three minutes for a question and three minutes for an answer, which may be very hard to do, but we're going to try. Um, I hope to say, I see Bill's hand up. I see Michelle's hand up and, and we'll come back. I'm just going to try to finish this and see. Um, I would like to be able to say, if I'm doing this or we have a moderator, you know, if your, if your intention is not to ask a question, but to say that you are against zoning, thank you. And we have heard that many times and, uh, we appreciate your sentiment, but we are trying to answer questions here today on this second draft. So I, do you have a question is what I would ask, when, what I would ask a moderator to say. And then we will, and I'll ask one of you to have a timer. Um, you know, I, I'll, I think I'll bring my egg timer and just make it go ding. Cause I don't know what else to do, you know, but I have, I have a good egg timer that will go ding or a thing that will go ding. But I can't do that myself and do other things at the same time. It's just not possible. So I see Michelle's hand up and then Bill's.
Uh, yeah, I, I forget how things ended up. Is, are people going to also be in person for the Zoom meeting? Or is it all just?
We've only advertised it as on Zoom. So that's what we were hoping to have, particularly because this room is rated at 75 people. And I just can't even imagine it, how we could possibly, uh, do it. People can't see the screen. It can't, you know, there's no way in this room to have that happen. So I'm, I'm, I, I would like it to just be Zoom. Bill?
Thank you.
So yeah, so, and I'm, I'm thinking about this, you know, I understand that there's a lot of people who want to say, you know, no, you know, this shouldn't be zoning in Caroline. And I respect that and want to look for a way to sort of, I mean, it allow that expression. Um, and I don't know, like I said, I mean, cause it, but also a way to enforce. And I, I could, I don't mind if someone wants to take a brief statement to make sure that the, the temperature of the community registers that we don't want this. Uh, but yes, we don't want three minutes of that. Cause the intention and the purpose of the meeting is three minutes of an actual question about these articles. Cause that's the feedback we're looking for. So I don't know. I mean, if someone is starting on a, we, I just don't want a zoning to say, okay, we give them 20 seconds or something, um, to, to express that point. But then we have to have a good way to really enforce that. Okay. But we're moving on now because we want the, all these other people to have a chance to ask their questions. And I don't know. I mean, on Zoom, you can cut a mic off. Um, but I don't know if there's a way to adequately do that in, in person. And that's the job of the moderator, obviously, really is to sort of try to enforce that. But again, I want to at least have some steam vent so that people can say something. As opposed to saying, you can't say anything about not wanting zoning. I think that might not go over well. If we restricted anyone from saying anything about zoning. So I'm just trying to think of an escape valve for that. And then in terms of answering questions, again, my hope, and this will help give the community confidence is that, you know, primarily the zoning commission is answering questions with Nan there for very important backup when the question strays beyond the articles into stuff we don't know about. Um, but I also don't know how we sort of choose which one of us answers. Um.
I would hope people will raise their hands and I can see you on Zoom. I, I.
Okay. So let's go to do that.
Yeah.
And, and I think that maybe that's, you know, if people can keep their, and I may be the worst culprit, but try to keep our own answers short, like to a couple of minutes. So in case another zoning commission member wants to add 30 or 45 seconds, that that would, that they could do that. I, I don't know how to handle that either. So.
Yeah. The, I, that's exactly. Like, these are the kind of things I've laid out when I've asked people to be a moderator, but I haven't gotten anyone to say yes yet.
I, I would think that we could, when, when somebody brings up that we don't want zoning, we could specifically say to them, why? And, and what don't you like about the second version of the draft?
I could ask, what's your question?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's your question?
I mean, if you have, you don't want it, that to you tell me why or what don't you like?
What is, and what is, yeah, what are you, what is?
Yeah. Except, you know, why, why don't you want zoning is the three minutes that people already said to the town board? So I think you're focused Bruce on saying, what don't you like about articles one through four? Maybe we'd get to the point and then Barb should chip in. But so I'm, I'm worried that you're saying, you know, why simply says, okay, you have three minutes to say things that you said already, basically in town.
But I mean, turn it, turn it around is what I'm saying. You know, like what, what about draft two? Is, do you have a problem with, you know?
Yeah. What's, what's the issue? I thank you. That's helpful. Um, okay. So this is what.
Barb, Barb is your hand up.
I'm sorry. I can't, Barb, your hand is in the same color as your wall.
Um, yeah, just a, a couple, a couple of points about logistics. Um, if we raise our hand to answer a question, our names are just going to get in the list of all the hands that are, that are up. So I don't think that's going to be very, very noticeable, uh, to, to you all as, as moderators. So what I would suggest is perhaps, uh, using, using the chat, um, and not the chat to everyone, but the chat, you know, to somebody specifically, like, you know, if I think I can answer a question, I send a chat to Mark or Jean, or you know, whoever we determine gets the chat. Then to say, oh, you know, Barb will answer this question. Because I, I just don't think us raising our hands, it, it, you know, with, you know, maybe a hundred people raising, having their hands raised is going to work. Um, the, the second point is that, um, I'm actually very concerned about this notion of trying to cut people off from saying they don't want zoning. Um, we've advertised that they get, you know, that every person who chooses to speak has up to three minutes to speak. Um, and you know, if they start saying, I don't want zoning, and then you interrupt and say, well, you know, what is it about articles one to four that you don't want? Well, you've already used, you know, 15 seconds of their three minutes. And then they're going to come back at you. And to, you know, to me, um, I don't know that it's worth it creating all the animosity that we're going to create by not letting people speak their minds for, for three minutes. And then the response is not a three-minute response. The response is, thank you. Next question or, you know, next comment. So, you know, we're not using six, up six minutes for each person. We're using up three minutes. And that's what we've said that they're entitled to. And I think if we say, no, if you're making that point, you only get 30 seconds. I don't think that's going to fly very well.
I think Barb speaks. Yeah.
Um, man?
No, I was, I was just not in particular, but in general, just wondering who and how you will manage it if it devolves into kind of a shouting kind of, you know, not very conducive to having questions and answers, um, which, you know, that, that can be very difficult and it can be, it's difficult for the people who are there. It's difficult for you guys. Like, so I think you ought to be prepared on who's going to step in, how, how you're going to handle that. At least be prepared. Cause it, if there, you know, there certainly is a likelihood that people will get angry over something. And, and that will change the temperature in the room very quickly.
That's a very good point. I will think about that. And I will, Mark, do you have any good suggestions about that? Having run a lot of meetings?
Well, just, I don't know. Developing a good process and sticking to it is, is all, I mean.
And outlining the process at the beginning. I appreciate, um, Barb's point. Um, I guess I would like to say, uh, at least say at the beginning, we hope that people will ask questions, which is what we have said in everything we sent out. We've said, ask questions and make comments. Uh, and we hope that people will ask questions about articles one through four. Um, that will be the most helpful. Um, what do other people think? I mean, I heard.
I, I, I basically think that, that, you know, although this is presented as an app, as a, as a, uh, an information session, um, you know, really as much as anything else, it's got to be the opportunity for people to get up and say whatever they want to. And, you know, it's going to go on for two hours and then it's done. You know, and, and people can still get answers to their questions through all the other means that, that we, that they have at their disposal. And so if it's not an effective meeting in terms of garnering answered question answers, um, at least we've made it possible for people to be heard. So I think it's, it's incredibly important that we, you know, just give them their three minutes, cut them off. You know, pro zoning, yeah. You know, cut them off three minutes. That's it.
Uh, Bill and then Michelle.
Yeah. Okay. So, you know, so Barb seconded by Ernie. Yeah. Speak with a lot of wisdom. And so I'm not opposed to that. What I, that's where I was hoping that like a 30 year, one minute statement, I don't want zoning might be enough. And if we want to say, okay, there is my, my problem with that. And I think there's the problem to some extent with the listening sessions is that typically allows a lot of misinformation and bad information, um, to just sit there. If we just say, thank you, next question. Um, but I agree. Otherwise you get into a tit for tat or does not. But so it's, it's really dangerous to basically give a platform for what winds up not being correct information. We're trying to present correct information about the draft. And so do we even take a moment to say, well, no, that, that what actually article three actually says is X? I, I, I don't know. Um, so that's where I get a little bit stuck that I don't want to just leave bad information hanging there. Cause it's kind of like, okay, you know, fine. Uh, so I, that's where I get stuck. And I don't mind someone saying, hey, I don't want any zoning in the town. I, I understand that's a, that's a valid point of view. Um, and I, but, but to give time then for, you know, because it's going to make X, Y, and Z be true, which is not true. Cause it's not in the draft. And then do we, yeah. So that's where I get worried about that. But I agree, all things considered, that that might be the most expeditious course uh, for this event. But indeed, as Jean said, we, I think we should sort of make the attempt at the beginning to say, you know, it would be really helpful, really the focus meeting. We understand that a lot of people don't want zoning at all. But it'd be really helpful if, you know, we could spend most of the time of this meeting trying to re-discuss the particulars of, of the draft.
Michelle and then Barbara.
Yeah, I, I agree with Barb's point especially, although I, I understand Bill's concern. I don't know what to do about that, except that, um, then I think maybe you just have to say, that is incorrect and just move on.
That you're engaging somebody at that point.
Well, then I think Bill brings up a really important point, but what I want to get back to is, you know, I share Ernie's, uh, the question of like, what is it that you don't like about these articles? I would love to have the opportunity to actually have people point out, you know, what it is. Rather than all these untruths or, you know, things that relate to cities or whatever. I would love to have somebody say exactly what it is that they don't like about the second draft of articles one through four. And I wish there was a way we could somehow, if they're just going to say, I don't like zoning. I wish we could just say, give me a specific thing about these four articles. Uh, I don't know how you do that exactly, but.
I think it's, I think it's unrealistic to expect people to be conversant enough to actually, you know, kind of pull out the, 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 the things that they don't know. They, they're either going to kind of embrace it as an idea, or they're going to reject it as an idea. And I think.
Well, it's really, you know, it's the responsibility to pull this stuff out because, you know, we're asking for honest feedback. And if you're going to be a citizen of this town and you're going to make, you know, you've got to start reading this stuff and pull it out.
Probably not going to happen a hundred percent. Barbara?
No, I.
Yes. Um, you know, to, to Bill's point about, um, uh, factually incorrect statements or inflammatory statements being made, what do you do about them? Okay. So instead of saying, thank you, you can say, um, you know, thank you. Okay, so instead of saying, thank you, you can say, um, you know, thank you, um, much of what you've said, you know, is, I don't know if you want to say incorrect, but, you know, mu- much of the, um, misperceptions of what you've just stated are addressed in the two hundred fifteen questions that are answered on the website. And I encourage you to, to go read them. But what that does, that, that won't, that won't, uh, that won't convert any of the minds that are purely anti-zoning to be purely anti-zoning. You, you, you know, this meeting or anything we would say in three minutes is not going to convince anybody of that. But by acknowledging that you've heard what they've said, you don't agree with it, you believe that there are factual inaccuracies or misperceptions in what they've said, and there is another source of information. Anybody who's, who's participating, who says, oh, uh-huh, I wonder why that is inaccurate, at least has been flagged, uh, that, that's inaccurate. And, you know, we're not accepting that as factually correct. So I, so I think there is benefit in acknowledging that something is factually incorrect. You know, there, there are facts and truths, um, but we don't have to spend three minutes saying what those facts and truth are.
Okay, Bruce and then Nan.
Okay, well, I, I agree with what you just said, and I agree with Ernie, so we, I, we do need to listen to people. But as far as if, if we have and we know, and somebody gives us a fact that, or not a fact, it's completely wrong, and we know what the answer is to that and where it is in the draft, why don't we just straighten it out right then and there and say, section one says this, this is what you need to read?
I, I think that, I think that's reasonable if that's the, if they've made a specific point about a specific thing. Yeah, I'm not sure if that will.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, it, it, because that way everybody who's in the crowd will know that I should look here.
I think we will attempt to do that, um, but I don't think it's going to be easy. Nan?
Um, two things to that. One is, do you want to offer, um, you know, I'm sure we'll all take good notes. Do you want to offer that the zoning commission will provide, you know, something in writing or, or, you know, some sort of response afterwards or not? I know you and, I know Barb and Bill are like done with the writing part, but just so that, you know, if there are points that go, you know, I, I was thinking that if there is some way that we, we can't respond on the spot, but, uh, because some things, sometimes people ask questions that you have to go back and you have to read it and think about that scenario and how it would play out. So not every question is answerable at that minute, you know, off the cuff like that. Uh, so I was just throwing that out. So if you don't want to do that, that's fine. But the other thing is going back to something that Barb said about answering people's questions via the chat, uh, which I certainly don't have a, a problem with. I just, I just think that.
No, 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 I, I just want to correct you, no, not answering questions via chat. It was to signal to somebody who's running the meeting that I'm, I'm ready, you know, I'm available to you, for you to call on me.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Do that, do that in the private chat, no, not, not getting into chat.
Okay, that's, okay.
Not at all.
All right, so who, who then would be monitoring that to, to make that call then?
I'm hoping we can set this up the way we did the last time we had a Zoom meeting, which is that the faces of the people who are members were all the faces that were exhibited. That's what, that's what we saw. We didn't see every face in the crowd, we didn't have a thousand screens. But we can set it up so that it's the faces of the people here, the members. And then when people ask a question, the, that participant's list is down the side. And if they ask a question, their name goes to the top in the order in which they have signaled they want to ask a question. That way, if I'm moderating the Zoom meeting, or I can look at my screen and say, I see that Bill is ready to answer a question, or I see that Barb is ready to answer a question. That's what we did. Do you remember that, uh, Nan, I think, I, was it Rick who set it up that way?
Yes, yes, we did set it up that way. I'm trying to remember, um, I mean, yes.
Did you do a Zoom webinar or did you just do a Zoom meeting? Do you remember? Because they do have different functions.
Um, I almost think it was a webinar.
All right, and that, that's where it's easy to show just presenters and not everybody else. And if we do that, that's fine, we need to practice.
But I think the same thing can be done. I think, Mark, if you're going to be controlling the, you know, who's entering, you're, you're going to have to, you could probably make the zoning commission members all co-hosts and then mute and, and turn off the video for everybody else.
Right, okay, yeah.
Okay.
But again, but, but, but to Barb's point, she was just saying that someone, whether it's Jean or Mark or some other person to be designated, needs to serve the function of mo- for the virtual meeting of monitoring the chat so that they can inform someone or be them themselves, the one that calls on one of the zoning commission members to answer the question. Um, and, uh, oh, so to Nan's point, this is what you added, my hand raised. I think what we, if we can, if we all have our wits about us and we do this right, I think that maybe the way to handle the questions you have to research is to tell someone, that's a great question, could you send it to us in writing and we'll look into it? Because I don't want to, it, it might be hard to remember to write down and write down well everyone's questions. But by, you know, putting, A, the person can really phrase the question exactly the way they want to. And it also requires them to take that step so that we're not meaning to say answering questions that, that don't need to be answered. So if we can figure out a way to do that, I think that might help. And again, um, if we can think of a way to do it, I'm willing to offer my services, uh, either before or during the meeting, where people want to come out for a, a five minute, one-on-one to ask specific questions. Uh, if you guys trust me enough, I'm happy to do that. And that would be a quieter, more personal venue than standing up in front of the crowd. Maybe that could diffuse some of the, the pressure to, to answer questions, but it also might deflect from the meeting. So I don't know if it's a good idea or not.
I don't want zoning, go out and see Bill.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm not kidding. I mean, I can stand there and let, I'm not, not that, but have people yell at me and maybe figure out a way through some of that anger and engage them a little bit. I would be happy to do that, because I would love to talk with these people, you know, anyone who really is strongly opposed to zoning. And let's see if we can start to understand where each other is at. I'm happy to try that.
Okay, um, I think that, uh, what Nan was also talking about before was, um, if things become disruptive uh, in the sense of people not being able to hear each other because of shouting, I am inclined in those cases to just shut the meeting down. If we get to the point where I can, where I or whoever cannot control the meeting, I will call the meeting to an end, which I will feel very bad about, because we promised public hearings, you know, public meetings and information meetings. But I, I don't intend to get into shouting matches with people and I don't, you know, there, I don't know what else to do. And we will have had a Zoom meeting where there was an opportunity for questions to be answered. Does that seem reasonable to people?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that if something like that goes down, that, and like even I could stand up, I think, could take control at least to.
Yes, exactly. I think all of us have that role.
That's not good.
Yeah, please sit down, we're not going to engage in.
Right.
Ad hominem, we're not going to do that, we're gonna behave like people. So, um, I'm going to think this through. Mark and I and, uh, probably Nan will go through this once more. We'll check to make sure that we have the Zoom meeting set up so that I, people can see you and not necessarily each other, but they have, can ask questions, we'll talk about all that at the beginning. And, um, I will write down a long list of things that I have to say at the beginning, and I will get that out to people so that you can add to it. And, um, I will get that done as much as possible, uh, by this weekend.
Jean, one, one, one more detail. So for the virtual meeting where we are taking turns presenting part of the slideshow, um, I don't know how that's going to work technically, whether there's one person who's sharing a screen and then the people who don't actually have control of the computer say, next slide, please, and that kind of works. Or if we each would share the section that is ours and share a screen, which gets to be complicated, that's the bar, not going to share ahead, but I, you know. So I think, yeah, and, and then we said, maybe we should try to do at least a little bit of a run through to make sure that, whoever is running it needs to make sure they really can share the screen properly and get the slideshow up. Because the last thing you want is just spending ten minutes sticking around with the technology, uh, when you're trying to start the meeting. So we just have to make sure that part goes smoothly.
I'm maybe on Monday that we could do this.
Monday.
But next Monday and, uh, but those of us who are presenting, I think it would make a lot of sense for Nan to control the slideshow and, um, for us to say, next slide, please. Um, unless we have those clickers that the nuns used to have. I don't have one of those, but I've always wanted one. They look like little frogs, is my memory. But I didn't become a nun, so I didn't get the little frog.
Nan, Nan, when will you be sending the final slides around to everybody so we have them to study up for our section?
Yeah, well, I mean, the, I think the, uh, I'll try and do it tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I will get back to everyone in writing tomorrow an email. I'm going to stop this discussion and see if we can do two other things, which I really want to do tonight. One, which is clearly not to work on development standards, but to look at the conservation subdivision issue quickly and decide what we want to try to think about there. And also the report that came from Craig Modisher and the review board and have a little bit of a discussion about that. So, um, the conservation subdivision standards, I know they're on page, I think, thirty. Where are they? No, they weren't. Fifty-two? Yeah, page fifty-two. So it is, this is section uh, five, five, something, yeah. So, um, this is a concept that I think as Nan has explained it, we could have, we don't have to have. Uh, we're sort of leaping ahead in time here to think about this, but we said we wanted to talk about this. So what do people want to say about this?
Uh, I guess I will go first. Um, I mean, I, I like the idea. I mean, my basic understanding of the conservation subdivision design is that, and Nan has explained this to us, that its purpose is that, that rather than just like laying a bunch of roads and plugging houses down, you first actually look at the parcel of land and figure out where, you know, what might be the most important conservation elements to conserve and don't put the houses there. So you look at the land first and then figure out what parts of the land, you know, are most suitable for the housing. So I like that way of going about it. I looked up a bit on the web and indeed, typically anywhere from fifty to seventy percent of the buildable land is set aside as conservation land. So Nan's suggestion of fifty percent is not out of line with, with what has been done and what is typical design practice. And I know there's a concern that Ernie has, but I did look into it. And so that seems like a not unreasonable place to start. We need to think hard about Caroline, is that the right number for Caroline? But I do like the basic concept that, yeah, you look at the, the property first before you put down the roads and try to figure out if, you know, what sections might be best to leave as, um, not built on. So I, I like the concept. There you go.
I would just add one thing, Bill, to the concept that I think is super important, is that the conservation subdivision, even with the open space, is still what we call density neutral. It does not change the number of houses or lots that you are eligible for. You could have ninety percent, um, open space and you still have the same number of houses that you are eligible from, from the dimensions table. And I think that.
Yeah.
We can't emphasize that enough, because people automatically think fifty percent open space means you're taking away fifty percent of the land. And, and that is, there, the density and the design are two totally separate things that we have to keep reminding people of.
Yeah, and, and to reiterate, I mean, and this applies like major subdivisions, right? I mean, and all the pictures I saw online were, you know, twenty houses going in on a hundred acre parcel. And they did be, they, they, they were on one-third to one-half acre parcels. And then the other half was like a park or, you know, the other sections. So it's the sort of thing that probably, it's not going to happen very often in Caroline, because that's just not the development pattern we have, but we could have some, we've had one. So, um, but yes, well, well put.
Um, I see Michelle's hand.
Um, yeah, I guess I, I don't understand the objection to it, especially since they still get to put the same number of houses in. I, I just don't understand the problem. And I guess, Ernie, maybe you can explain that.
Well, I mean, the, the, the problem isn't entirely visible until you actually have a piece of land that you're trying to develop. You know, my, I guess my, my general feeling is, is that, um, yes, I like the idea. The concept is, 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 is kind of, you know, great. And I understand that it's not really changing kind of the overall density, but I still think that it feels like a taking. And that, um, it's just going to be the bridge too far.
But, but these, again, these are for large developments, right? It's not like, uh.
And so it's, I guess my point would be that, that, you know, what we've seen, um, even with the subdivision law, that, you know, everything is underneath the threshold where the law actually starts to require people to do something. So that is probably likely going to continue to be the case. And I, I guess I'm just afraid that, um, you know, if, 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 if people take umbrage with this particular thing, you know, this is, this is something that I think that can, can set off lots of fires, um, of objections, for the reasons of saying, you know, you're taking away half my land, blah, blah, blah. And it's going to scuttle all of the other things that are, that are good in this regulation that, um, I think we're, we, we can potentially lose. So, um, as, that's just, you know, that's just my, my thoughts. And, uh, I, I don't know how to, I don't have any, any, um, real specific, um, issues with this. Except then knowing that, um, when a developer comes to look at a piece of property, you know, they're looking at the cost of the property, they're looking at the cost of the infrastructure, and then they're looking at, you know, potential profits for each individual lot. And that, uh, when we do that, you know, if you can sell somebody a, you know, a, a, a ten acre lot that's all theirs versus a one acre lot with nine acres in the back that has to be reserved as conservation land, it's, those are not going to necessarily sell at the same price. So, you know, it's, it's not just the same thing, um, as, uh, three acre lots. So I, I just, you know, I don't know, I, I, I just, I just think that this is just a little bit more than, than we should be pushing for at this stage. And that, uh, since, you know, we all recognize that it's likely not to be part of the zoning regulation that's even going to come up to be questioned, you know, why are, why are, why are we pushing for it? So.
Okay, I'm going to go, um, Bruce, Bill, Nan?
Yeah, I, I, I like the original concept, like looking at the land, uh, figuring out best places. But I have many questions on the site design criteria, the open space standards, all the things that go along with it, the protection of the open space and, uh, the maintenance standards. I have a lot of questions and a lot of things I don't like about it. And if these are the standards that we have to follow, then I really don't think this is what I would like to put forward.
Okay, Bill?
And so, and so, yeah, so I hear you guys, I hear, you know, what you're saying, Ernie. And indeed, I think if it came sort of push to shove, that this one provision looked likely to, to scuttle the zoning law, I, I would say, yeah, we should jettison it. And we may have to sort of see how it, how it flies and, you know, we're going to revise again. Um, but I do want to say, I think it's not typically that it's like, oh, I'm trying to sell this ten acre lot and nine acres has to be conserved. I mean, what we're really looking at typically, again, a developer comes in, and again, maybe this never happened in Caroline. Um, and it, because you are right, I mean, there's an impact that rather than carving up a hundred acre parcel into three to five acre pieces and selling everyone three to five acres, the typical conservation subdivision is going to have smaller lots of a third to an acre, two acres, but then a big shared common land park area. So in some ways that can be more attractive, right? You only, you don't only have your three acre backyard, you've got access to this fifty acre park. But you're also right, for that person who wants five acres around them, they're not going to be able to get that i- if, if it's developed as a conservation subdivision. So it's, it's a different set of priorities and a different set of incentives. And some people like one, some people like the other. I think that was normally going to happen. I think that what's normally going to happen in Caroline is. Most people are going to divide up into five or ten acre pieces and we're never going to trigger this. Agreed. Um, so I'm willing to sort of let it go and I'm, I'm fine, Bruce, at, at looking at some of the design criteria. I think that's, you know, you raised good questions and we should take a look at that.
Okay, I think I said, uh, Nan.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, two, two points, um, one to Ernie and one to, to Bill is that. Where these have gone in, um, I, I think, Ernie, you said something about that it would be, they would be worth, you know, it would decrease the value. I think the history of conservation subdivisions have been that they are very desire, even the smaller lots are very desirable. Subdivisions because of that. The way they're designed is that every lot has either physical or visual access to the open space and people like to be. Um, near land that is going to be conserved in that. That dedication of the conserved land raises value. So they've been very successful. Certainly not less profitable. So I just wanted to make that point. And the other point was to Bill is that the, the beauty of. The conservation subdivision is that if the developer wants. To have a cluster of houses on small lots, they can. If they want to have them spread out onto large lots, they can. If they want to have a mixture of small lots and large lots, they can. So I don't think it's accurate to say, oh, well, it's either or. It, it is absolutely, um, an open slate. So if someone wants to have a few small lots and a couple big estate lots that they sell. Um, and all of the open space gets put on those estate lots, that's fine too. So I think we just have to, you know, keep learning about how it works and, you know, I think going through. Th- this is one technique that actually going through some examples. With you, um, if, if we ever had the chance to do that, I think that you, um, some of those issues would be cleared up.
Okay. Um, does anyone else have a comment about this? We wanted to have this discussion tonight because at some point fairly soon, we're going to get to this. And I wanted people to have this in their heads. And I really think what we need to do is go and read the whole section through again. And then make a decision when we get to it about whether we want to try to include this in a second draft or not.
When, when you designate open space, is that public?
Only if you want it to be public. I mean, if you, if for some reason that's part like, um. I think we have in the density bonuses that we offer a density bonus for, I think we included that for public access. Um, so, but you don't have to. I mean, that would be up to the landowner. If they want to have it private to either on one parcel that is owned by one person or one family. And it's on their estate lot or large lot. That's fine. Or if some of them are like a homeowners association that's owned in common by everybody in that subdivision. And it's only available to those people. So no, they don't have to be open to the public. It's the, in what it depends on what the goals of the landowner are.
I, I'm just thinking if it's a conservation subdivision and that open space is not open to the public, then. I don't see what the worth of it is other than being able to see.
Because you're, you're preserving the environmental features of that open space. It's not all recreation. It could be. Um, you know, an important wetland complex. It could be an important hillside. It could be, there's any number of things that. That open space could be important. So it's, it's to preserve open space, not to, not to promote recreation. Although recreation could be a part of it.
I, I've even seen these in gated communities. I've seen a gated community that had a conservation subdivision in it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's some really nice ones in Pennsylvania that are horse themes, you know, and they, they. The common open space are, is all horse trails and. Other, with a, a barn that every had, everyone that lives there has a stall. So, I mean, there's. Unlimited flexibility to create what you're, you know, whatever your desires for that land would be.
Right, like Bedford, New York is like that. Bedford, New York is a giant bunch of horse trails. And I, I don't think it was ever developed as a conservation subdivision. It was just developed as a place for very wealthy people. Um, but it has this, it has this whole trail system through it for residents of Bedford to use. Through it. So we won't finish talking about this when we get to section five, but I want people, we wanted to have this conversation tonight to sort of get people thinking. As we get to that. And then, um. I seem to have managed to come without the report from Craig and the review committee. Um, maybe I'll ask, um, Bruce, you want to talk about that? Cause you.
I.
There.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody could put it up.
I, I have it to put it up if you like.
And it'd be handy.
Yeah, cause you just talked about some of the definitions, I believe, and some of the. Needed to be.
Thank you. Yeah. So basically, um. What, what we were, it was about what we were asking them to do. I had sent them a whole bunch of, I, I sent them the first draft. I'd sent them. Reports from the, um. The task force and, um, several other things that people wanted to, wanted to look at before they got there. So we asked them to look at particularly at. Uh, article six and to a lesser extent, four and five. Um, and I guess what's it saying here is that there was a general consent that article five particularly was replete with subjective interpretations. And lacked reference materials and resources on which the RB could make defendable decisions. And we haven't, and, you know, we said that they, we haven't reviewed these. Um, so that they, they then went on to look at article six as this was the most focused from the site plan review. So did anyone have any thoughts when they read this about what? What people had said? Cause as we get to these sections, I think. Um, the opinion of the review committee and people who've been working with. Site plan review is, you know, it's important for us to know. So that I think that they were asking about like, what does design traditions in Caroline mean? Being more. You know, um. I mean, I think, I definitely think that there's a, a, you know, there are styles of architecture here that we see in Carolina and throughout Johnson's County. You know, but they range over, there's a fairly wide range of them. You know, it's not, it's not all one particular style. But we don't have a whole lot of what I would call super modern housing here. You know, we don't have, we don't have a whole lot of the flat roofed. Kind of. Stuff.
There are some. My, my general sense of this was that these reflect a lot of my own comments on the exact same things, you know, that, you know, this is vague. This is. You know, this, we, we shouldn't be regulating roof pitches. We, you know, we shouldn't. You know, there's just, you know, so, so I kind of feel like it's a little premature, you know, it, it, we haven't edited that.
Right.
Section yet. So they're just telling us things that were, I mean. Well, I have my way. They're going to get edited to reflect kind of more what they're talking about here. So. I, you know, I don't know how to respond to this other than. Yeah, these, these are, you have all of your, your thoughts here are shared by other members of the commission and, uh. Expect some changes in the revisions. Pretty much.
Uh, and, and so, yeah, I mean, that's what jumped out at me as well. And I wound up talking to one of the zoning, uh, review board members after the meeting. So I got some of the same feedback at the time. So, and I knew that was going to come up, you know, cause. Probably because Ernie's always prodding us too. So, and I, so I think that as a review board, they're concerned with having really nice, clear, concrete things to review things by. And I think that's really good feedback for us to keep in mind. So that sort of underscores Ernie's points on that. I know there was a discussion and they do highlight it here about. And, and I know Nan had contributed some comments prior to the meeting about site plan as a law separate from zoning versus incorporated into zoning. And, um, in that note, Nan argued very cogently why it's really is best to have. Site plan inside the zoning law that it works best that way. Um, but they raise a key question. Of what happens with your site plan law if it's in the zoning? And then if it turns out. Five years, 10 years, two years from now that a, a town board decides to repeal the zoning. Um, is there a way to set it up so that site plan springs into action again? And that's a question for Guy, I think. So I think it's an in- interesting question they, they raised. Nothing we're going to answer. They also raised a question about some of the escrow stuff. That's also, I think, a Guy issue. But we'll get to some of these details when we get to this section, as, as Ernie said, but I'm glad we have their input. Um, so we can look at it, you know, when, when, when we really do deal with that section in detail. Um, but I will also want to emphasize that a lot of this drew on the work of the task force. Um, and so, um. You know, it, uh, it wasn't just pulled by Nan out of thin air. I mean, she was really leaning heavily on what the task force, I mean, the. The zoning law itself, I mean, the, the cycling law itself is exactly either what we had already in place. Or then slightly modified by the task force. And so some of the things that they were, uh, I think that jumped out to me is they are now willing to go with a, a one step. Review process. And that's other big change. The town is always operating with a two-step process. I don't know if they've just, you know, seen the wisdom of Nan's comments, uh, or looking at it hard. They came to a different opinion. Um, but, you know, I want to, as you know, that's what we've been doing all along and I'm happy to change it if, if they really feel it'll work better and, and Nancy seems to think so. Um, but, yeah.
So, um, Bruce, is there anything about that when they, that, that came up in the meeting or? Is that going to a one-step process?
Yes, they thought that a one-step process would be really the way they would like to do it.
Great. So that's wonderful. Okay, so I am going to then, I think we've sort of, you know, hammered this out until we actually get to it. I'm now going to talk about July and August meetings. So, um. I will look at a calendar instead of just trying to make it up out of my brain, because. I find it just doesn't work so well anymore. The hard part is remembering when I used to be really smart. You know how that is? Yeah. I'm hoping to forget that when that goes away, because, you know, because I can still remember when I used to be smart. So.
About fifteen.
You won't remember.
I think that was a smart ass, maybe.
I think that was it. That was the pinnacle.
I'm sure, yeah. Okay, so, um, we normally have been meeting on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Uh, in July, that would be the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. Um, and in. August, that would be the ninth and the twenty-third. I am going to suggest that we, uh, I don't know when people are going to be around or away. Because we have the ability to meet by Zoom. Um, that may not make as much of a difference though, if you are, you know, as I will be for some of that time on the ocean. In, uh, I may really prefer to be in the ocean. Um, so I'm going to suggest that we meet twice in July and once in August. If there's a time that would, would work better for people. I think we'll have some cleanup to do after the. The two public meetings, the public information meetings. And that we'll hear and that we may want to go back and make some alterations while they're still in our brain about articles one through four. The old, the new articles, one through four. And I want to make significant progress on articles. The old articles, whatever the hell they were, four through, umpty, um. Um. So what do people think about that suggestion? Or would people prefer to meet twice in August as well? What's life like for people? How about, let me, let me look at a show of hands. What is July twelfth like for people? Can anyone do that? You're good?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Um. So in general, that seems to work. July twenty-sixth. Thanks for me. Okay. August ninth. I'm here. Bill is, is iffy.
That, that far in the future, I have no idea what I'm doing when. So I suggest we did.
Okay.
I said scheduling things. I have no idea when I'll be around.
Let's do this then. Let's say that we're going to meet those two times in July and we'll come back at the first meeting in July and make a, then figure out what's going on in August. Um. That, does that make sense to people? Okay, so let's do that. So we're going to be meeting on July twelfth and August twenty-sixth. So the next meetings from here are. June twenty-eighth, June thirtieth, July twelfth. And at the July twelfth meeting, we will work to finish off development standards. And to go on to. I don't know. I don't even remember the name of the articles anymore. It's all becoming a high, a giant niche march in my head, but that was development standards and we will go on to supplementary standards. Um, from there. And I believe that Barb and Ernie had looked at supplementary standards. Is that right?
We, we made a lot of comments about that.
Excellent. So I will look to the two of you to present, um, when we get to that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Good. Um, before we close out this evening, is there anything else that we need to do? I'm going to get everyone some stuff about how these meetings are going to set up. We're going to make sure that we know how to make the Zoom work. I want to have stuff at the, the Brookton Dale Fire Hall, like. If there are extra copies left over there of articles one through four, bring them so that people can grab one or share one with a neighbor. Um. You're going to have somebody record the meeting.
Some way, somehow.
Some way and somehow, you know, in some fashion, it will be recorded. Um. It's not, they're, these are not official meetings of us. They are public meetings. So, uh, that we are running. So I'm not going to take minutes. Um, but I love the idea about saying if, if somebody has a question that we are, do not find a good way of answering. That we say, please write that down and send it to the town clerk and to me and we will. Um, we will look into it. Um, so that's useful. And, um. I am living in hope that these go extremely well. Cause I prefer to live in hope than in despair. It's a much more attractive community. So.
One question.
Sure.
So you said August twenty-sixth, but it was July.
July. I said, I did, yeah, July twelfth and July twenty-sixth.
Okay, and you said the next meeting, we're going to talk about development?
We're going to finish off, uh, development standards. At our next meeting, at our, you know, first July twelfth meeting. Development standards, which you should be able to finish off and then go on to supplementary standards.
Okay.
Which is.
We're not going to go back to conservation subdivisions.
No, that's in, that's in supplementary standards. Yeah, that's in there.
Okay.
So. Okay.
And is. Nan's presentation, what she's just showed us online?
She sent us that to all of us. It's not online, but she's going to make some changes of it and send it back out.
Okay.
Yeah, she sent that out quite a while ago. Okay, everyone? Good. Um, and happy summer.
Yeah.
It is also the International Day of Music. I hope you go home on, on the way home, listen to music. I played ukulele on the commons today. You are so, I did.
Wow.
I know.
That's great.
I did. So.
What'd you do?
Greater ethically.
I played, I played.
Orchestra.
The Ithaca, the Ithaca Yukes. Yeah. We played a bunch of things together and then a small group of us, we played, um, Ain't No Ash Bull Burn. And, uh, which I will play for you, but I do not have my ukulele with me. So, good night, everyone. I promise not to bring it to either of the public hearings. That could drive people away. Bye, guys. Thank you very much, Nan, for everything you do.
Maybe you should, you know, maybe you should bring it to the meeting just in case.
Just in case?
Yeah.
I think, you know, generally when you take out a ukulele, people tend to run.